So let's call the meeting to order on time. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Seconded, all in favor, contrary carried. I did think it was a little bit of a joke that we're going to start right after the summer holiday and the first issue we get to deal with is geese mitigation, but we'll turn it over to you if we may. Sue? Sue? Jill? Who's going to?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Stephanie Nelson.
Our park's environmental manager.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. We're here this afternoon to give you an overview of Canada geese issues in West Vancouver. So Canada geese are a well-recognizable species. They're native to Canada and naturally migratory, but some conservation work that occurred in the 70s resulted in a southern Canada resident population. This resident population is considered introduced, they do not migrate, and they're the group that caused problems. Are there any visuals with this?
Yes. Mr. Chukwuegbe, do you want to share our script?
So you need to share it. You're in the right spot. You just need to share. Share file.
Lovely, thank you. The visuals are actually really nice. We don't want to miss those. All right, next slide. So Canada geese are herbivores. They feed on grass and other tender plants. They have a strong preference for mowed lawns because there's more protein in young shoots. So taller, older grasses are more coarse and offer less protein, especially in the summertime when goslings are growing. They require the higher protein and go looking for fresh shoots. Water's the other most important feature for geese is access to water. So they use water for drinking, preening, and bathing, but most importantly, they use water as an avenue of escape when they're threatened. So especially in the summertime when they have goslings that can't fly and the adults are molting, so they've lost their flight feathers, they always stay near water so that they're a short distance to escape. So on a larger scale in the province, Canada geese impacts include impacts of public health, so they, in particular areas with freshwater swimming, many communities face swimming closures of their lakes. In some parts of the province, they've caused agriculture impacts due to heavy crop grazing and soil compaction, and they also have negative influences on tourism and recreation. Some of the local impacts here in West Vancouver are excessive fecal matter on some park pathways, grass areas, beaches, and sport fields, damage to some sport fields and park grass from the heavy grazing and hole digging. Canada geese actually dig little holes in the grass so that the water pools for them to drink and use, and then conflicts with geese at decorative fountains and playground water features. So geese and humans share the love of maintained grass near open water. So these two features, lawns and water, are a key component of many urban landscapes. Here's a summary of our highest conflict locations. So all of these locations feature large open water beside maintained grass, Dunderave Park, Horseshoe Bay Park, some of the sports fields like Ambleside, as well as the West Van Community Centre with the great lawn and the decorative water fountain in the plaza there. So while we know we have some population of geese, the District of West Vancouver does not currently have any population survey data on Canada goose abundance and distribution within West Vancouver. Geese are highly mobile. They often cross municipal boundaries and property lines, meaning those in West Vancouver parks may move between other municipalities, may be moving from other municipalities. Studies done by others have shown that they move between Stanley Park and the North Shore, with one banded in Coquitlam later found in Vancouver. So while the resident geese are non-migratory, they certainly move frequently throughout the Lower Mainland. All right. Despite being non-migratory, the resident geese are still protected under the Federal Migratory Birds Act and pursuant regulations. They're also protected provincially by the B.C. Wildlife Act, so some of the mitigation options I'm going to talk about, including hazing and egg addling, cannot be pursued without the federal and provincial permits. So mitigation categories can fit into three groups. The first one's landscape modification. This includes installing barriers like fences or planting trees and shrubs along the shore to break that clear path between open water and grass. It also includes some maintenance practices such as letting grass grow taller and reducing or removing irrigation and water features. The second category would be scaring or hazing. This includes things like lights, lasers, flagging tape, raptors, or trained dogs. This category does require a plan and a federal permit. The third category would be population control, and this would be egg addling, which was removing eggs from nests and replacing them with non-viable eggs. This category would also require a plan and a permit. So some of the mitigation options that we've implemented with some success. This year, we adjusted our turf maintenance practices in some key conflict areas, including Horseshoe Bay and Dunderave Parks. We reduced mowing and irrigation, and we did observe a reduction in geese activity. We also turned off water features at Dunderave, Horseshoe Bay, and the community centre. It's interesting to note that we turned the water feature back on at the community centre and the geese moved back in within four days.
Wow.
So we turned it back off. We've also been reaching out to other communities to learn about what they're trying, what's working for them, and what's not. We have increased the frequency of power washing in areas like Horseshoe Bay and the community centre, and we have a goose poop collector that we run on sports fields and the great lawn. So further mitigation options that can be implemented in terms of next steps we can take without getting permits would be continuing to refine and build on the success we've had with landscape modification efforts, including turf maintenance practices and water management. By identifying those areas early and proactively reducing mowing and irrigation, we can also pilot more landscape techniques such as installing barriers, a temporary fence that can be put up in early summer to deter geese from moving into the prime parks and staying there while they're flightless. We can also provide more information to the public, such as signage about geese behaviour and utilize social media. We can also consider further actions that would require us to obtain applicable permits, and these include hazing. Based on work in other jurisdictions, the most effective hazing would be through the use of trained dogs. It's typically done in late spring or early summer. This option is time and labor intensive, and it requires a dog handler trained in this field. Safe zones or areas of refuge would also need to be pre-identified and established before implementing this, which might not be feasible in locations such as Horseshoe Bay where there's limited space. Hazing activities could also have spillover effects on other wildlife because geese are often seen using the same locations as ducks and herons. The other one that would require a permit would be egg addling. This involves a contracted biologist to remove eggs from nests and replace them with previously collected eggs that have been slowly cooled and frozen to render them non-viable. Then those addled eggs are warmed and placed back in the active nests again, so they'll be accepted by the nesting geese. This option would require some population data to be collected and nesting sites surveys to be done. This work's typically done in March through May. It would also likely involve getting permission from other landowners if the nests are not on district property. Neither of these two options can be implemented without first obtaining a permit from the Canadian Wildlife Service of Environment Climate Change Canada, so the earliest either of these could be done, if we could get a permit, would be 2026. The population data and planned development would need to happen in 2025. To obtain the permits from the Canadian Wildlife Service, we would need to undertake that population study in 2025, then create a comprehensive management plan. We would also need to demonstrate that we are implementing those other mitigation options such as landscape modification, but they're inadequate, and we would also need to engage a qualified professional. So staff are looking at all of the options on this slide, but we recommend a combination of option one and two, which is that we continue to implement mitigation techniques on an operational basis, do increased surface cleaning at high-use areas, and pilot some seasonal shoreline fencing. The funding for this will be taken from existing park dollars and may reduce some plants' fencing and cleaning in other areas to accommodate. Staff do not recommend investing significant dollars in geese mitigation, given the mobility of geese and their ease to move from one community to another. This could be reconsidered if there was ever a regional effort to mitigate geese. So to conclude, there will always be some level of Canada goose population in West Vancouver. The key is determining what the acceptable population is, which locations we're okay leaving them be, and focusing our efforts at locations where we really want to keep them away. It's likely not possible to control a reduced population in West Vancouver without a broad regional effort involving most of the municipalities in Metro Vancouver. Concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Feel a few kind of dumb questions, and we'll see how other members of council feel, but I didn't really realize we had an overpopulation problem. Are there natural predators for geese?
There are. Mr. Mayor, there are natural predators, like coyotes. They certainly do some control, but we don't know if there's an overpopulation. We could have the right population. We do get complaints, though, about goose feces on the pathways and sports fields and what have you.
Yes. Members of council, Councilor Watt?
Yeah, hi. Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. And I have a question. It was something a constituent posed to me when I was in London Drugs last week on this subject, and she forwarded me a photo taken at a park in the U.S., and there was quite a healthy-looking wolf sculpture. And I'm just wondering, would it be worth looking into, or do you know much about that? And would we require a federal permit to use that tactic for scaring if we used 3D sculptures that would essentially be community art?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Watt. We wouldn't need a permit to do that. That would be a scaring tactic that wouldn't need a permit, but geese are quite quick to learn that they're not, they're quick learners. They pick up that the owl character isn't real and that the streamers or lights won't harm them, so work done in other municipalities in the Lower Mainland. Anyways, we've heard that hasn't been very successful, or it might be for a very short amount of time, but then they quickly move back in.
Okay. And I do want to add, so I live in Horseshoe Bay, and the longer grass that you've got in the field, it's been brilliant, and I've been noticing when I drive by the sports field, obviously that has to be maintained. In Ambleside, there's a lot of geese there, and we don't lately have any that I can see roaming around on the grass. So the longer grass definitely works because it was actually kind of untenable for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cassidy.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do you want to go ahead?
No, sorry, I didn't.
All right, sorry. Thank you very much for your presentation. This has been an ongoing issue for as long as I can remember, and yes, the population is increasing, I'd say substantially. How can we prove that the size of our population? We could lie, by the way, that's just an aside. But anyway, once upon a time, people deemed them cute, and they're not dimming them cute anymore. So I read an article, I believe it was in the province of New Brunswick, where they got federal permission to load an inordinate number of their geese into the back of the truck and send them where they're never going to fly again. Yes, they got permission because it was such a harassment factor in their communities. So, I mean, to continue to provide money for an ongoing problem seems to be, you know, throwing good money after bad, to me, anyway.
Thank you, Councilor Cassidy. Councilor Thompson.
Thank you. Yeah, interesting presentation, and you actually, in your concluding remarks, addressed some of the issues or concerns I had around if we start doing things, where do they go? But just out of curiosity, you said you turned the water off and let the grass grow, and the moment you turned it back on, they came back. Do we know if there is sort of a timeframe, like if we did that for a year, do you think that would be enough to get ourselves out of the habit? I see someone in the audience shaking their head no. Do you know if there's a timeframe where they just kind of lose interest in the space?
Through the mayor to Councilor Thompson, I don't know that answer. I suspect that they would find it again.
Ultimately?
Ultimately, yeah.
Okay. And again, just out of curiosity, when they remove the eggs, do they destroy them or relocate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Thompson, they would essentially freeze the eggs so that they're no longer viable, and then use those same eggs to put back in the nest, but they won't hatch.
Well, you know, I tend to agree with Councilor Cassidy that it's hard to make a decision on spending money just moving a problem around, so it'll be interesting to see, you know, if we can come up with a solution. But in option two, you had that putting some fencing up and then, of course, allowing the grass to grow and whatnot. Would we save money on not mowing the lawn as much enough to pay for that type of approach?
There would be some maintenance savings with not, yeah, with reduced frequency of mowing, for sure. Couldn't say if it's exactly equal, but there would be some savings on maintenance there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gambioli.
Thanks for that report. That was really interesting. I guess we can't go back to that slide you had at the end with the four different options, but if you can, I think we should, you know, it's worthwhile focusing on really what the options are. I think that, I think, I mean, for me, I don't get any direct complaints about the geese. Like, I walk on the seawall and, you know, it depends what season, you know, I have to step around when I get over by Dunderave Park, but I don't really see a big push of people, you know, contacting me to talk about this issue. So for me, it's, I don't think it's a really big deal in the community. I would support, you know, some of your suggestions around further mitigation without too many costs, so obviously option one. I don't think that the community is going to be interested in supporting the hazing idea. I think the egg addling is only really important if we have evidence that there are more geese. I mean, depends on the day I see a bunch of geese, but I don't really know. So you're suggesting that we would actually, option four, use population data gathered. I don't know. For me, I think the community's not asking me to really get on this in such a big way, so, you know, I guess I would be, I would be, I could go for option two, but again, you know, just to give you some direction, I think that that's what you're looking for, and when you come back to us with the budget, we need to justify, you know, having this discussion, so I'm just trying to give you some feedback that is practical. I don't know that, you know, doing a survey and population gathering is really where we need to go right now. That's not the feeling I'm getting from the community, so those are my comments. Yeah, thanks.
Are you hoping to get some direction from council today?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go back to Councilor Cassidy.
So actually, when I was first on council, 2014 to 2018, this matter was raised a few times to me by members of the public, particularly at the area in front of the Beach House Restaurant, that the fecal matter was something to be seen. And there was a resident at the time who proposed that what we do is we get a horn and we scare off these birds with the horn. And of course, apparently, we're not allowed to do that, okay? But I also understood, in the grassy area which was there at the time, that the district hired somebody throughout the summer to clean up the fecal matter on the grass, and that person said to me, and I'm just, don't quote me on the figures, not necessarily accurate by way of numbers or my memory, something in the tune of like $12,000 odd dollars or something like that. But getting the idea that we're going to turn off the water for these birds, to accommodate the birds, really says that humans have to be accommodating them, and in these water parks, the children really do enjoy them. It's particularly during the summer months, and my understanding is it's recycled water that we're using, so I'd hate to see that happen. And when you go out to Horseshoe Bay, now that dogs are allowed in the park and it's a very obvious parkway along the waterfront there in that section, the geese will actually come after the dogs when they've got the little goslings. So it is a significant interference. So rather than, you know, the automatic response is how much money should we be spending to resolve this issue, I would be investigating just exactly what happened in this town in New Brunswick. Obviously, they had to get federal permission to do it, but they got it, and it has made a significant difference in their community. I mean, it was an article in some newspaper that I read at the time. I mean, I hate to sound horrible, but, I mean, one has to be reasonable and rational.
Thank you. Councilor Watt?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to add to what Councilor Gambioli stated. I think, Councilor Gambioli, it depends on where you live, because I receive complaints certainly throughout the spring and well into summer, and it's so bad on the path for most of this past summer that my dog wouldn't step in it. My dog is tap dancing around it, even he was disgusted. It is bad, but the longer grass has certainly helped. To what extent, I don't know.
Councilor Watt, Councilor Gambioli liked option two. Do you have a preference of fewer to help give some direction to staff here?
I would 100% support option two because I know when they have come through and cleaned, although I don't know that there has been enough cleaning. There are spots where, you know, I guess between cleanings, I don't, how often have you been doing the cleaning program?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Watt. In high-profile areas like Horseshoe Bay and Dunderave and the community centre, I think there was an additional once-a-week cleaning done prior to weekends.
Okay.
That's on top of the annual kind of annual power washing program that happens kind of once at every location in all parks.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Snyder, and I think it would help if we, if staff were asking for some direction, if each of us could pick an option.
I haven't had a lot of complaints other than the untidiness of the geese remains sort of thing. From my perspective, I think options, you know, one and two certainly make sense beyond options, you know, one and two. I'd be concerned with spending that type of money to, just to gather the data, information, and what have you, so, you know, it sounds like some of the techniques of the longer grass already seems to be working, and if we could put some barriers up sort of earlier on in the season to try and avoid attracting the geese, it's worth an effort. So options one and two, I would support.
Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, I just had a moment to review an email that was sent in today that I'll send to you. It's Therese Reinge, who's in the chambers right now, I believe. Seems to be well researched with some, you know, good ideas, some of which are an option and some aren't. But the one question, just for everyone, we're all getting used to these committees of the whole, what is the process for the public to interact?
I was going to do that in a moment. I'm going to ask if any member of the public wishes to.
Okay, so that is the process then?
Yes.
Okay, so great. But she, I'll forward this to you, but she does just implore us to do a humane approach, considering egg addling as one, and then suggests, you know, wonders if we can get federal permission to sell the meat if we do cull or anything like that. Anyway, it seems like a really good comprehensive letter. I'll send it on to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
And I'm more inclined to do number two as well.
Thank you. Councilor Lambert.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you for the report, and, I mean, there's no doubt that this is a problem, and I think that the measured solution that you were suggesting, which is a combination of option one, continuing what you're doing, plus option two, makes a lot of sense to me as well, too, so it helps to address the problem, and we can monitor it and see how that progresses as time goes on.
Thank you, Councilor Lambert. Councilor Cassidy.
Well, I would concur, option one and option two, but I also think we need to proceed with federal approval, whether it's with the eggs, whether it's with culling and other manners, but I think we need to be going out and seeking federal approval for other measures. It may take a while, so we may as well begin now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cassidy. Councilor Snyder?
Quick question in regards to Councilor Cassidy. You would also have to go through options three and four to seek the federal, and I understand that, so it's quite a significant amount of money because you would have to do these other options before you could even submit to the federal government.
Councilor Cassidy?
Thank you. I quite agree, but it would simply be an email to a department head and just exactly what would you require of us other than, you know, population count and so forth to achieve A, B, C? Simply, you know, just a question to have everything outlined as opposed to having to go through the population thing. But again, to my point, how do you actually prove the population is if it's a migratory bird?
Through the mayor to that, Councilor Cassidy. One of the concerns, if we went with culling and egg addling, is that the other geese that live in Coquitlam, North Vancouver, Squamish, Vancouver, will migrate back into our space, so without a regional approach, we are challenged in that regard.
Thanks very much. Councilor Snyder, you're, no, we're done. May I just ask, is there any members of the public, because this is intended, the council of the whole, which is a new process for us, is intended to be a very informal meeting and an opportunity for members of the public if they wish to address us in an informal way, to please come forward. Thank you very much, both of you.
Actually, it's Therese Reinge. I live in West Moonee.
Sorry, Therese?
Yes.
I missed your last name.
Reinge?
Reinge, thank you.
Reinge, yes, and Rhine River with a Ch on the end.
Thank you.
According to the research undertaken by professionals, roundups and killing programs are ineffective for solving problems with Canada geese. So putting them up in a truck and taking them away in Halifax or wherever that was would probably result, if you have attractive habitat in our parks, it'll simply be repopulated by additional geese once the molt is over and the geese can fly once again. So I don't think that's actually an option. And one of the things that I wanted to say in conclusion to the email that I sent in, I wanted to say that I was hoping that a humane and a lean toward habitat modification would be what I would prefer, and I think that's exactly what the girls have been suggesting. Thank you very much for doing that. Thank you.
Yes, I think that is.
I was going to say, and one of the things that is an issue for me really is when I mow the lawn, I have a lot of dog poop that sticks on my shoes. I'm not suggesting that we cull those dogs, but I'm thinking that there are ways to sort of, I think, get along with people and get along with animals, and that's just life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
I'll just add my two cents worth, which really concurs, I think, with Therese as well as some of the other comments, that I think a lot of our, you know, smooth, short, green grass areas at the foreshore might have to succumb to being a longer, more natural kind of grass rather than, I don't know if it's actually Kentucky bluegrass or whatever, which is, this is not Kentucky. It seems that that would be far more hospitable and respectful to a species that definitely, you know, this is their climate, this is their zone where they naturally arrive. I think it'd be a shame if there's too much fencing at the seashore because I think the humans lose. the humans lose there, too. I would just like to see natural tall grass myself.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, I think? Yes, sir.
I'm going to take the chair that's out of the camera range, if that's possible. David Reinge, West Vancouver. So I agree with the solutions, the options one and two, possibly more one. I'm hoping that maybe if we could do something like a save on grass cutting, we could do some more, maybe tree or shrub planting, get the varied landscape that would discourage the geese from settling in. I was just thinking about a situation that happened at the bottom of 31st Street. And there was initially a bunch of, this is where the outfall for the Five Creeks project was put in. And they initially put in some shrubs, a bunch of various native shrubs and things from, which was supposed to provide a buffer between the, kind of, the human activity and the foreshore. And initially, some of that was moved, removed, because they needed to get access to do some work for the maintenance on the pump station there. But while that was there, everything seemed to be kind of relatively under control. But then, last year, things got removed, about two-thirds of those plantings, and some grass was planted there. And I know it wasn't the Parks Department, because they said they don't plant grass. So, and then the geese moved in, and then we had a bunch of poop there, so. And I think, as was previously mentioned, I think, once the grass died and got a little longer, and it actually sort of didn't get water, so it died, everything sort of went back to normal, although I think we did have some dog poop there, I guess. But anyway, I think that's, would be my preference with this stuff, that if we could actually, and I think in maybe some cases, we can have the fencing and stuff, but if we can, you know, if we can actually look for natural options and things, putting shrubs and kind of, just, I know that's not an option for sports fields and things like that, but I think those are sort of natural options that would be sort of attractive still. And then for other areas, just use sort of temporary fencing, that might be a possibility. And just letting the grass grow a little bit longer when it's not required to be cut short.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts and input. I think there is clearly a consensus, and I think the thoughtful manner in which you're approaching this is much appreciated. Certainly, I heard around the table, option one and two are the way to go at this time. Could I have a motion to receive the presentation with thanks from our staff? Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Second to Counselor Watt, all in favor, contrary, carry. Thank you very much. This'll be interesting, having just returned from Italy, where people love their dogs even more than they do here.
Part of which is displayed on the screen and adopted a motion last October. We're here to provide some information and seek feedback. This presentation will focus first on some background on dogs in West Vancouver. We'll talk a little bit about what we hear about dogs in the community, and then we'll provide some ideas for discussion about moving forward for a long-term strategy on dogs. There is existing policy that addresses or references dogs in West Vancouver. This existing policy rests in three areas. The Animal Control and License Bylaw addresses all regulatory details about dogs in West Vancouver, including which parks, in which parks dogs can be off-leash. It also addresses details like licensing of dogs. The Parks Regulation Bylaw does not speak specifically to dogs, but speaks to basic parks' common sense, like not littering or not harming plants and wildlife. For example, this is why in Lighthouse Parks, Lighthouse Park, dogs are permitted off-leash on trails only, and not in the forest or on the foreshore, in order to protect the flora and fauna. The Parks Master Plan, completed in 2012, has some recommendations about dogs. Most are completed or ongoing, but there is a recommendation to create smaller off-leash parks. Other jurisdictions around Metro Vancouver have created dog strategies recently or in the process of doing so, and we are paying close attention to those to see what we can learn. How do we know how many dogs there are in West Vancouver? We can make some inferences based on available data. In 2017, the district conducted a phone survey that indicated about 28% of households own a dog. If we put, if we want to put a number of dogs to that, that translates into approximately 5,000 dogs. We know that pet ownership increased during the pandemic, and that is supported by the significant increase in dog licenses over the last two or three years, as you can see on the right-hand side of the slide. Another measure for estimating the number of dogs in the district is using data from the Canadian Animal Health Institute. Some other jurisdictions in Metro Vancouver use this number. The data is from 2022, and indicates that approximately 20% of Canadians own a dog. This is different than the number of households, but if we apply that number to the West Vancouver population, that's approximately 8,800 dogs. Another thing we know is there were almost 2,300 dog licenses issued in 2023. And based on that, about 25, between 25 and 45% of dogs in West Vancouver are licensed. Council's motion mentioned a dog-friendly community. So here's some information about where dogs can go in dog-friendly West Vancouver. Most parks allow dogs on leash, including the recent changes to the Centennial Seawalk and Ambleside Seawalk and pathways in Horseshoe Bay Park. There's always walking around the block near one's home. And West Vancouver's off-leash parks, like Ambleside and Upperlands Park and Lighthouse Park, are an attraction for dog walkers across the region. So let's look at a map of parks in West Vancouver. So here we are. Not all parks allow dogs. For instance, the pitch and putt in Ambleside Park or sport fields. But most parks in West Vancouver allow dogs on leash. So now we'll look at off-leash parks. This is the same map. We have just highlighted in red which parks are off-leash. West Vancouver is well endowed with off-leash parks. They are reasonably well distributed throughout the community, except for some of the dense areas in Ambleside, Dundrove. There are not as many parks in these areas, which is common for older areas of many communities. So that means that there's not as many off-leash parks there. Hay Park, for instance, is a well-known off-leash park in the Ambleside area. So that addresses what we know. And now over to what we hear about dogs, and we hear quite a lot.
Can I just ask, where do you get these lovely pictures? I love all of these dogs.
Aren't they great?
Are they yours? Are they staff's?
I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't make the artwork, but it's just a lot of fun to look at. So a spectrum of views. Opinions on dogs vary widely, from appreciating the many off-leash options to wishing for more control or cleanliness. We're going to flip between two slides here. They contain the same words, just to press down, they contain the same words, but different perspectives are emphasized. Experiences, whether positive or negative, shape views. And frontline staff often hear these perspectives, which are sometimes quite divergent and tend to be very passionately held. While most dog owners are responsible, issues like dogs on swimming beaches or on sport fields are common complaints, and this is difficult to enforce. And that is frustrating for the other users of these spaces. Overall, West Vancouver is seen as a great place for dogs. To recap, we have policies that guide dog management in parks. We've recently expanded dog-friendly areas. However, enforcement continues to be challenging, and like many communities, people are very passionate about their dogs. We're seeking council's feedback on where to focus our efforts on developing a dog strategy for West Vancouver. Our suggestions are on the screen, and I'll walk through them quickly. Capturing policy directions noted earlier from the Parks Master Plan, Parks Regulation Bylaw, and Animal Control Bylaw, to have them all in one place in the dog strategy. There are other jurisdictions around Metro Vancouver that are creating dog strategies, and we can align with aspects of those that make sense for West Vancouver. The idea of developing small fenced off-leash areas is noted in the Parks Master Plan. This will have a budget implication based on locations and how much work is needed and size. Small fenced off-leash areas are an interesting idea, because one of the things we've heard from other municipalities is that as areas get more densely populated and as dog ownership increases, there is a need not just for park space, but for safe local spaces for people to exercise their dogs. For instance, this could be included in planning for Cyclas Village. The dog strategy could explore the environmental impact of increasing park use, including from dogs as population increases, and it can discuss bylaw support and resources for situation that require them. We propose that the timeline for completion of the dog strategy is spring 2025, and we invite your remarks and comments.
Thanks very much. If I can just start with one observation, the small fenced off-leash parks, I think, are a wonderful idea. There's a beautiful one just above Fisherman's Wharf in San Francisco. I would strongly encourage Google mapping it, or if you're in San Francisco, going and seeing it, because it's not only good for the dogs, it's really a nice social environment. People get together and meet new friends, because their dogs are enjoying the space. And it's not, I guess they use an artificial turf so they can maintain it. I just love it. So that's my thoughts. Counselor Snyder?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. I mean, I'm a, also, I'm a dog owner, and I'm all about increasing opportunities for people to have their dogs with them. I do have a question, maybe you can help me understand. A lot of places allow for dogs to be outside restaurants. I mean, I understand dogs not being allowed inside restaurants, per se, but a lot of these outdoor patios and what have you, they're now expanding everywhere since COVID. A lot of places that I've been to allow dogs to be in the outdoor patios with their owners, you happen to be walking along, you know, you want to grab a bite to eat, and you have your dog with you, there's no issues with that. Who, is that a health and safety regulation, or is that something that we're able to control with our dog licensing and regulations?
Thank you.
Through the merit of Counselor Snyder. I would have to double-check that, but my understanding is that would fall under Vancouver coastal health as a health regulation, if it's a restaurant of that regard.
Yeah, that's what my concern was. And then, of course, the other comment I have is, you know, it's always a shame that they're, unfortunately, the poor, the bad dog owners who just don't clean up after their dogs, which is a real shame, and that's always, you know, it just takes a few bad apples to ruin it for everybody else. So just a comment there. I know enforcement's always tough.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, well, first of all, based on what the mayor said about great places to gather, there's apparently a little park in Headland, a housing project in Caulfield, and they have yap-yowar, where they meet in this little park with all their dogs. So it does, it's a great way of building community. And, you know, my comments, you know, around Counselor Snyder's last remark, and I, what I don't understand is why is enforcement so problematic? Because my experience is generally people are great with dogs, and there are just the few outliers. And I do have to comment that many people who are incredibly opposed to dogs on the seawall have actually said to me, I was wrong. So I don't know what sort of feedback you get on the seawall, but it's been good. I'm on there most days. But it's the trails that, you know, in some of the park areas, that really starts to pit our residents against each other and dog walkers. We've seen a lot of that. So why is it so hard for us to enforce bad behavior?
Mr. Mayor, one of the reasons that this is difficult is people are very passionate, and the time between calling a ranger or a bylaw officer and the time to get them there, people have left. So that's, this is what I've been told.
So would it be worth coming up with? I don't, I get that. I'm just wondering if we can develop a system that, of reporting and responding, that could be more effective? And I, I really have no idea, but that does seem to be the big issue. And then you get into people problems, as well as dog problems.
We can certainly look at that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
Yes, the, in your strategy, you seem to be silent on the Ambleside Dog Park. I realize that that's on First Nations land, but is the strategy going to address that at all, or include that in your considerations?
It's not meant to be silent. It's, we, I think I mentioned it, but we would definitely discuss it. It is not on district land. You're correct.
And, and I guess further to that, the, there used to be a fence line that separated that dog park from the Ambleside beach area, and that has been allowed over the years to naturally decay and disappear, quite frankly. And so the effective sort of area of the dog park has sort of bled into that beach area without consequence, I might add. I haven't heard any complaints about that, but, but it is something. But there still are signs that say, you are entering the dog park, but there's nothing there. There's no fence, just a sign saying, on this side of the fence, there's a dog park, and on that side, there isn't.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of, it exists in its own unmanaged, happy medium, but, and I think, if we use the phrase, let sleeping dogs lie, then maybe it's just fine, but just wondering how that's going to be.
We can certainly look at, certainly look at that. I wasn't aware that the fence wasn't there anymore.
Thank you. Counselor Watt?
Thank you for your presentation and for all the work that your department has put into this. I really appreciate it. And so there's a, there's a website, bringfido.ca, and I know a number of businesses in Vancouver go onto that registry. So I'm wondering if we have anything here in West Vancouver where businesses can actually register as being dog-friendly? And I know one of the other municipalities, now that Bring Fido, I just did a quick look, and I didn't see whether West Van is part of it, but something that might encourage business owners to reflect if they're comfortable with dogs going in could do really well for businesses as well. Thank you.
That would be a good thing to pass along to the Ambleside Dundrove Business Improvement Association. Thank you. Counselor Gambioli?
Okay, so a few things. I'm wondering if you, again, can put that second last slide back up, so we can be more focused about this. But meanwhile, I'll just say that unlike most of my council colleagues, I don't have a dog. I don't have a dog. I have a cat. And, you know, however, I live right next to Hay Park. I'm literally contiguous property with Hay Park, so I deal with dogs and dog walkers all day long, in the sense that, you know, I see a lot of people, I talk to a lot of people. And based on your report, I'm actually surprised to learn that only 50% of people have their dogs licensed, or less than 50%. Okay, why is that? And why don't we have everybody licensed? And isn't that a bit of a money-making venture? So why can't we get, I'm happy to door knock and check every damn house, if you want, but I want to know why the dogs aren't registered and what are the consequences? Obviously, not much.
Mr. Mayor, I checked with District of North Vancouver and City of North Vancouver, and it, we have similar numbers to those two communities in terms of the numbers of dogs that are registered. So I know that many years ago, the District of North Vancouver did a door-knocking campaign, and so there, apparently it helped their dog registration. But I think the other reason is that some people don't know that they're supposed to register their dog. That's the other feedback I've had.
Okay, well, so I would say that, you know, Counselor Cassidy and the rest of council would support more revenue in our budget, so let's throw that into the mix. I would say that... I would say that, yeah, 50% is pretty low regardless of what other communities do. And, you know, I wonder about that because some of you know that I was attacked by a dog a couple summers ago, Doberman that came and attacked me while I was riding my bike block away from my house. The problem, other than I got a nice scar on my arse, is that, is that the dog wasn't registered here and it was actually from California. The dog was here for its summer vacation. So there was actually no recourse whatsoever for our bylaw officers and that's a big problem, I think. And so if half our community isn't registering their dogs and there's a whole bunch of outside dog walkers coming and walking around the community like this one was, that's a real danger, I would argue, to our community. I'm not, you know, an old lady yet, but my concern was, you know, if it hadn't been me, it could have been anybody with this dog that was off-leash running around attacking people. Anyway, so I think that's a really, really, really big problem. You know, in general, I think we do enough for dogs here. We do a lot for dogs. We do more now than we did a year ago, and I think the costs are high and I think we do more than enough for dogs. So I don't think the people I talk to are interested in spending any more municipal money dealing with dogs, especially when half of them aren't registered and aren't even paying for, you know, the recycling of dog poops in the park and everything like that. So that's where I think, you know, a chunk of the community stands. But having said that, as we densify more, for example, in the Ambleside area, we will need more, you know, whether it's fenced-in spaces or whatnot, we will need more of those spaces. So like I said, I live right next to Hay Park and it is a very concentrated number of homes that, I mean, everybody comes to that park. I mean, at five o'clock when people get home from work, there's just this steady stream of dogs from every direction. And I have to admit, I do respect those people because rain or snow, they're out there with their, walking their dogs. When, of course, I'm just sitting inside patting my cat. Anyway, but, you know, we will need more spaces and Hay Park, for example, the east side of Hay Park is, you know, completely devoid of ferns or anything low. It's been completely destroyed by the dogs running back and forth and people throwing their balls and, you know. So, you know, we need to do more work on a park like Hay Park where there's a lot of concentrated dog activity. And if we're densifying, we're going to need to create some more fenced-in spaces. That's my opinion. What about the owners? I guess this goes together a little bit with the dog licensing. You know, one of my best friends is a very big dog advocate and she's always saying, you know, it's not the dogs, it's the owners. It's the owners, it's the bad owners. Okay, so can we please educate the bad owners? Because every time a dog jumps on me, which seems to happen regularly, you know, the response is, oh, she's just wanting to be friendly. And, you know, my legs are completely scratched and my son is afraid of dogs because he was like actually thrown on the ground by a Doberman, by a German shepherd at Ambleside Park when he was five years old and he's 20 now and he's terrified of dogs. So how do we educate the owners is, I guess, my question? And can we put that in part of the plan? Because I think that's really important. It was pointed out to me by somebody recently that there are more and more people walking their dogs without a leash when they should be walking with a leash. And I have seen that since that was pointed out to me. I've seen that in public spaces this summer quite a few times. So I don't know if that was just a fluke or not. So anyway, getting back to this slide. Yes, I would support, I would support what you've written here again, if it's not, you know, a huge amount of resources for staff to work a bit more on this. But in general, I think we do a lot for dogs and I think that the people I talk to are happy and, you know, don't want us to spend a whole lot more resources on it.
Thank you, Counselor Gaviola. Counselor Cassidy?
So one of the issues when we approved dogs being able to go on the seawall and so forth, we were given the statistics of how much we actually generated from dog licenses, the revenues from dog licenses. So I'm curious to see if we have had an uptake in revenue from dog licenses, but also there is an area of the park which is basically from John Lawson to, I guess it's the foot of 15th or wherever where the old clock used to be, that people do walk their dogs when they're not supposed to walk their dogs. And I do know that they get stopped by park rangers or bylaw officers or so forth. Are these individuals, i.e. the bylaw and the park individuals, are they actually checking that the dog has a license around its neck? If so, the idea was when we approved the walking of dogs on the seawall, that this would be checked and so we would get more money, which of course I love that. But also we would have more opportunity to keep track of who's who amongst our dog owners in the community. I know I went out and got a dog license and by goodness, when that license expired, I got multiple calls to renew my license. So I do know the department in and of itself is vigilant, at least with respect to me. So as members of our staff in these departments, they should be enforcing, which was the idea, that do you have a license? All right, what's your name and address and we, and phone number? And we will be checking on you because as I said, they sure check on me and good on them. But I don't know if at this stage in the game that I would be wanting to spend money on small fenced off-leash dog areas. I guess the word is small that I would have issues with. And when you put turf down and those dogs urinate on the turf and it's a good hot summer's day, it's not exactly a pleasant place to be. But I do know that they do work and as Mayor Seeger has referenced, it is social. They have one at the foot of, you know, behind the auto mall there in North Vancouver and it works extremely well and it is a social place for individuals to sit in those benches and enjoy themselves. But it's not a prescribed place. In other words, just a piece of turf, they're not special plastic lawns put down and so forth. So if there is such a thing, I would like to keep it as natural as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Watt?
Yeah, I'll be very quick. I'm wondering what the actual fine is for a dog owner without a license right now? And is there any wiggle room to raise it?
I don't think we know.
Forgive us, we do not have that answer in front of us as bylaws. And it would go through the fees and charges process.
Okay. And the other question I have, and don't know if this is you guys' or bylaws, but, you know, a lot of people in this community are on the Nextdoor Neighbor app and various local Facebook groups. And I'm wondering if a plug that we will be ticketing, reminding people they do require those licenses and they're up for renewal, I guess, January 1st, whether that might also bring in a bit of flurry of money before the year end?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. And then I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public wishes to address this and we'll move on.
Thanks. And I'll just make some of my recommendations. I'm not actually sure fencing is something, dog owners would know better, but I'm not sure that is a worthwhile investment. Just, do you think we need them though, aside from all our parks? Just a thought. You know, I do think some sort of licensing campaign, and I just sent you a photo in, at the top of the, near the Capilano Canyon, just as you come through the trail into the dam, there's a big sandwich board that says, hey, dog owners, is your dog on leash? A simple picture of a dog holding its leash, you know, and if we did some sort of awareness of are you licensed and leashed awareness, or those, I always find those postcard mailers are kind of effective. And I think that that might be worthwhile doing, but again, it really comes down to our ability to enforce. And that's, oh, the other question I had is for dog walkers, do they have to get a license to be a dog walker? And if so, do they go through training? Do we know?
They do require a business license.
A business license, but do they actually get trained about how to manage their dogs? Do we know?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if the commercial dog walkers have to go through training. It's true that they have to get a business license and they also need a commercial dog walking permit. And they're charged for that.
A commercial dog walking permit? It'd be good to know whose jurisdiction that would fall under to provide, require dog walkers to have training.
Okay. Counselor Watt?
I believe they do. And I just say this because several years ago, I was looking for somebody to walk my dog when my dog walker was sick or away. And I posted that on social media and I immediately got lambasted by a couple of professional dog walkers who talked about having insurance and being licensed and all the rest of it. So I do think they have to be insured. So I would think some level of training perhaps comes with that, but maybe not all, obviously.
Interesting, we can follow up on that. Could I just ask, is anyone here, other than members, anyone in the gallery wish to address council on this? Could I have a motion then to receive the presentation? Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Seconded by Counselor Watt. Discussion all in favor, contrary carried. Thanks very much and we'll move on to our urban forest management plan. Sorry, yes?
Just one thing, I should have brought it up during the earlier item. I just wanted to check to see if council wanted to pass any recommendations to council from the committee of the whole in relation to these items so that they can be brought back at a future meeting, just to formalize the comments made today.
I think we've given staff informal direction on this. I think there's, the first item clearly consensus around that. Let's move, if we may, to the urban forest management plan. Heather, thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, I'm going to provide a relatively quick presentation on the status of the urban forest management plan. The intent of this is just to provide an update in terms of where we're at following the last time as a council in March and just to have a discussion to ensure that council understands how this plan is working and if they have any questions. So I'll just give a quick overview of the urban forest management plan, where we are with implementation, the public engagement that we held in June, and then sort of the next steps of what would be typical in terms of implementing the plan. So just to give you a broad overview, and you have seen this before in previous presentations, the plan's been set up to first have a vision, so community values, what the community prioritizes in terms of the urban forests. We've established a canopy cover target of 52%. Currently, as of 2021, we're at 51%. So it does seem to really indicate that we're trying to maintain and slightly grow the canopy cover over the next 15 years, which is the lifespan of the plan. We've outlined goals in five different categories to help better manage our urban forests. And within each of these goals, we've outlined 59 actions or recommendations, I suppose you could say, on how to achieve our target canopy cover. And these are sort of short, medium, and long-term goals that the district could consider to ensure that we're protecting our urban forest. The plan also includes at the end an implementation schedule. So this is what staff and our consultant worked in terms of outlining who would be responsible for each of the recommendations, what funding and resourcing would be required and sort of the timing, short, medium, and long term. So I just will reiterate that on March 11th, council approved the urban forest management plan. Now, just to reiterate, this is a policy framework, a high-level policy that provides recommendations to council or to the district to consider how to maintain and enhance our urban forest. The actions within the plan or recommendations that require further budget, additional staff, or council direction or approval would still need to come to council at appropriate time for consideration and approval. So by approving the plan does not necessarily mean that every single action will be approved, but it gives us a guiding document to help better manage the urban forest. Along with the approval of the plan, staff were directed to begin the implementation of the plan, which includes incorporating the recommendations into our annual work plans and budget cycles. But also, we were directed to do public work sessions with the community. And so staff's understanding of these public work sessions were to go out to the public and to the community and ask members what they thought were the priority actions that we should start with. So today's session is report back, is to report back on those sessions and discuss these priority actions and how we would go next steps on the implementation for council So just to get really drilled down to the issues that were observed during the periods of time that we've been doing tree canopy cover analysis. So the primary issues that we've been observing with our urban forests is that we're losing canopy cover primarily on private property due to redevelopment, so clearing lots when new houses are being built, or we did see tree canopy cover lost in new subdivisions. So areas five and six, we've seen the decline just based on the timing of our tree canopy cover analysis. We are losing mature trees from development, disease and pests, lupa moth. We are starting to see quite significant impacts from drought on our larger trees. We have had some fires that have impacted trees and there is a recognition that there is some illegal tree work happening in the district. People who are cutting trees without the knowledge that they need, they require permits and there's only certain trees that can be removed for certain reasons under the tree bylaw. There's also what we have observed is that there's inequitable distribution of canopy cover across the district. So there's some areas such as Ambleside that have lower canopy cover, more dense urban areas, whereas areas such as out to the west of West Vancouver are more dense in canopy cover. So these are sort of the issues that we were evaluating as the urban forest management plan was developed. And so what the plan includes is we had a consultant developing the plan and they identified actions or recommendations that could help to address these issues. And these are ones for the district to consider to work towards our canopy cover target. So these are recommendations such as particularly related to redevelopment impacts on private property, things to consider would be lowering the tree protection size to, and they suggested 20 centimeters of diameter. Right now, it's 75 centimeters in diameter, with the intention that that might help to protect more trees primarily in the front and backyard where often trees are just removed for ease of construction, recognizing still that trees can be removed in permitted, within your permitted building envelope and that sort of thing, but it's trying to save just a few more trees during development. A consideration of maintaining tree density from before to after redevelopment. So there are quite a few municipalities that use this. They establish a per canopy, or a canopy cover per hectare. And so you would look at an individual property and say, establish the percentage of canopy cover that needs to be maintained and from before or after redevelopment, or just with trees being removed on existing properties. And so your replanting requirements would be based on meeting that target canopy cover per hectare. And so that does give a bit more incentive to retain trees that already provide you that canopy cover or, and then supplemented by new trees. This also helps with the equitability of tree, of canopy cover across the district. So out to the west where properties have lots of trees, they may not have to replant as much because they've already met their density target, whereas trees, or say in Ambleside for properties, they might have to plant more. And that might help to distribute the canopy cover and deal with areas that need more shading and those services that the trees provide. There was, there's thoughts to increase replant, replanting requirements and improving our landscaping requirements for new builds. So really ensuring that the landscaping plans that are submitted with building permit applications have replanting requirements, the number of trees, the types of trees, and that they're in areas where they're actually survive with the right spacing and soil. And then the last thing which we've heard quite a bit about is protecting trees in a better way during construction activities. Trees are significantly impacted at times during construction and so really trying to tighten up those regulations. On the public lands to address and maintain are the district's mature trees, they discussed recommendations to increase successional planting, which means replacing all the trees that are removed. This is sometimes difficult and something that the Parks Department really focuses on. Often with infrastructure, the way sidewalks are in business areas, it's difficult to replant trees in the same location. replant trees in the same location. So we're trying to work to resolve those situations and looking at areas that we can replant. And then the other last one was proactively maintaining public trees in high-use areas. So right now, we're on a reactive basis. If a tree is brought to our attention that's hazardous, we would address, assess, and address it. The plan recommends keeping an inventory and a database of our trees, knowing their condition, and maintaining them on a cycle to ensure that our large mature trees survive longer. So those are some of the recommendations, the key recommendations for the district to consider to maintain our urban forests and meet our targets. So since the plan's been approved, staff have been doing some work that has not required any additional budget or resources. We've developed a new replacement tree list that helps, these trees that are more suited to our current climate for wildfire resilience and that sort of thing. It also divides the trees into height classifications, so that if you're in an area that people are impacted by views, you can choose trees that won't grow to a significant height. This also helps to address or minimize the conflict between utilities like hydro lines and trees. We have new resources on the website in terms of how to plant a tree, where to plant a tree, just resources for residents to help them navigate. We have implemented a plant a tree program with schools last year, and we're continuing this fall, where we're going to, I think approximately 10 or 11 public schools this fall and planting trees with them, which will add to our inventory. And then I'll talk about our public inventory, and tree inventory that we've initiated this this past summer in the next slide. We're starting to better track the number of trees we've been planting. We're trying to minimize tree removals related to wildfire risk and looking at other treatment options. And we're just generally trying to pursue external funding to help with these programs and work with more community members on public planting and restoration events. So just to focus in a little bit about the public tree inventory, this is primarily led by the Parks Department. We have been working with our consultant to get an inventory of trees in our high-use areas, our business areas around sports fields and our main parks. And right now, we're just developing our database. So we're building, we've surveyed the trees, and you can see in the picture that each individual tree through GIS analysis has been located. Now, we have crews going out there and assessing them to just build an initial database of what our, what our trees are and what needs to be done. And this will just help us to better track over time whether trees need to be managed. We're working to ensure that we're consistent across staff in terms of evaluating and assessing trees, and this will just generally help the maintenance of our, of our tree work on public property. So the public work sessions, so what we did is we went out to the public and we asked them to rank their priority of actions from the plan. So we outlined the actions for both private and public lands that would require what staff think are more budget or significant changes to our current regulations in order to implement. So we wanted to see from the community what they thought were priorities. During this time, we outlined not only what the benefits to these, each of these actions would contribute to the community, but also what resources would be required. And so we wanted to get a better understanding of what the community thought. So we did our regular outreach to promote the sessions just to the, to the communities, but we also did targeted outreach to several different groups and stakeholders to ensure that everybody was aware of this work, could attend, could fill out the online survey. So we reached quite a few people or as many as possible. We also included our arborists, builders, developers, and architects, and, you know, some of our environmental groups and, and community associations in order to ensure that everyone knew. It was a low response. We had 97 respondents, which is quite a bit lower than what's happened in previous engagement rounds. I believe the last time we did public engagement for this plan, it was over 400 respondents. So keep that in mind as I discuss the results, because it is a very small portion of the population. That being said, what we heard, and I'm just highlighting here some of the top, the highest priorities that people felt were important to maintain our urban forest. So the respondents felt that taking security deposits to better prevent tree damage on construction sites and neighboring properties was really important. Exploring incentives to help retain healthy trees during redevelopment. The density concept was, was highlighted as a good priority and increasing landscaping requirements. The last one under private property is that protect all trees greater than 20 centimeters diameter for properties undergoing redevelopment. So I've highlighted this. It wasn't a clear high priority clause by respondents, but it came up quite often, and it came up in the comments section of our surveys as being important. So it's definitely worth highlighting. It's been discussed quite often. Staff are still considering how to best implement this or put it into a bylaw. There are some concerns that it may not address the issues that we're really looking for in that our, the consultant recommended to do this only for redeveloping lots as a balance. We're not seeing lots of canopy loss on existing properties. And so blanketing, having a lower tree protection size on all properties would essentially mean almost every tree was going to be protected in the district, and that's very, that's significant change to what we have now. Focusing on where the key issues are for clearcutting of lots and, and having a lower protection size was sort of the, the thought process. The difficulty in implementing this is that somebody could clear their lot before they applied for their building permit application. So there is ways to work around this. It's also whether the language and the clarity of a bylaw like this would be, would be difficult to navigate for homeowners, understanding when it would come into effect or not. It might lead to more illegal tree work than expected, so it's an important one to consider. We're just trying to work on how to best navigate that and whether it will actually really get to the, to the, address the issue that we need to. But it did come up quite a lot. On, on public lands, there was a strong consensus, or, you know, priorities of, as we discussed, you know, replacing every inventory tree, developing a planting plan to ensure succession and preventative maintenance. And so those are the ones that came up for public lands. Some of the low priority actions were related to, there's recommendations to say that a cash-in-lu concept, so if you're required to replant on your property, but you don't feel that there's the space to do it, then you could just provide the district money instead to put towards planting elsewhere. District of North Van has this concept right now, or this requirement right now. People didn't feel like that was gonna help, because people might just end up giving money and never replanting on their property. So that was one that was, felt to be low, low priority. So next step, so now that we've heard from the community, what typically happens with these plans is that we would continue to implement the actions that are already funded or can be done using existing staff. So we would continue to do that. We are seeking actively grants to help us particularly with tree planting programs. The Parks Department has been successful of that. So we can continue to do this without coming back to council. These are mostly educational outreach programs to ensure that the awareness and the education is there for the urban forest. It is a reminder, the Environmental Reserve Fund is intended to support something like an urban forest management plan. It's important to note that if, if the reserve fund was to be used for anything from the plan, we would need to come back to council for approval. The reserve fund is typically, and the environmental levy is, was really dedicated to using, for one-time projects or one-time requests to, to start things or to figure out feasibility of things or to get things going, but not used for ongoing operational purposes. And that's because the, the fund is there now, the levy is being added, is being collected each year, but the longevity is unknown, the amount there is unknown. So to require it on an annual basis permanently is, there's a risk there. So ongoing programs that are recommended from the urban forest management plan, such as proactive maintenance of trees, should we increase bylaw regulations for tree protection on public, on private lands? That would require additional funding and would need to come forward with annual budget cycle requests. So the next steps typically would be for staff to use what the community has said in terms of priority and what would help to address some of our issues and bring forward bylaw amendments for council consideration. So those would be the next steps. It's important to note, and, and staff do recognize, that there's a lot of competing needs for our, our budgets and our funding. That is understood. And so it may not be possible to request additional staff and to maintain sort of the community expected service levels. And so it'd be important to note that when we did bring these forward, we would identify, you know, the required resources that in staff's opinion would be needed to effectively implement. But understanding that the resources aren't available, that we'd want to identify to council what would be the impacted service, impacts to service levels. And so I'll just highlight that quickly now. It's 4:20. I'll highlight that. So we are expecting that should these bylaw amendments come forward to really tighten up our regulations on private property, that we would see an increased number of permit applications. We would expect that the tree permits tied with building permits would be more complex, because there'd be greater trees to assess, and so that may slow down permit time waits. If we increase landscaping plan reviews and requirements and added security deposits, there'd be a new level of work in terms of inspections, administrative duties, that we just don't do right now. And then the increase, we would expect in the, in the initial phase that there would be an increased volume of illegal tree work, because people would not be aware or up to speed. There'd be an education component to get used to any of the new changes. For any new work on public lands, although we are actively seeking grants, there may be additional operating budgets should we move towards proactively maintaining our trees on a, on a regular basis. So we would want to highlight these to council as they navigate some of the implementation of this plan. There are opportunities that we're seeking to sort of offset these impacts, you know, shifting the workload of inspections and that sort of things to the applicant team, which is what we do in other, in other processes. We could use the Environmental Reserve Fund to temporarily offset initial expenses if we implemented something new until things leveled out and we could understand better how, how things are working. The use of the Environmental Reserve Fund, there's a risk. There's lots of climate action priorities that we have right now that are, are funded through that, and so we need to sort of balance the need of that reserve fund for all the things that we're considering. The other possibility is implementing a phased approach, trying some bylaw amendments that we could do with existing staff, monitor and see how it's improving over time, and then, and then look at, focus on more on education with our building community, and, and go from there and monitor it to see if a phased approach works better. So those are just, I know that was very quick, but I just wanted to highlight sort of where we're at with the plan right now and, and answer any questions that you have moving forward, understanding that I know we only have a few minutes left.
Thank you, Ms. Keith. No doubt, this subject is probably the most challenging for members of council and one that we receive more input on than anything else. I don't, we, we're certainly not going to have time this afternoon to get into any deep discussion on it today, but it's certainly good to have this brought to our attention. And I think members of council will need quite a bit of time for discussion amongst ourselves as to how we approach this. Counselor Gambioli?
Well, okay, thank you. I'll start off. Thank you for that report. I'm glad it's come forward, you know, sooner than later. I note that in your, the original plan, eighty, fifty percent of the population thinks that we should increase our canopy, and 37 percent say we should maintain the canopy. So together, that's 87 percent of the population. You know, this issue is more important to the community than just about anything. It's more important than dogs. It's more important than Canada geese. It is really, really important. And when I look around at any of the treed areas in the community, I get really, really concerned, because half of them are dead. So I, you know, we sent you back after March. We sent staff back to basically come up with a plan that includes supportive funding for this issue for the next 15 years. So I don't see how we can now go back and say, oh, we didn't say that. We're not going to agree to that. So I, I think it's fair to say that we need to, if it's required, you know, put some funding into the service levels that are going to be required, into the operating budget that's going to be required. And I think that the community expects that. It's not something we can wait any longer about. You know, it has huge effects on, on everything from, you know, water runoff to oxygen levels to people's mental health. So I think that this is really an important issue. One question, actually I have two questions. So I really liked that sort of report card that you had in the original plan, the, the green, yellow, and red, but this didn't follow the same format. Will we have an update at some point that sort of shows us if we've progressed in those areas? I don't know, just keeping it simple for me?
Yeah, through the mayor to Counselor Gambioli. So you're referring to the report that we did in the State of the Forest Report, so that was the initial document that we had to sort of say where we're at right now. And so we did a report card. So the plan recognizes that, makes recommendations in terms of our goal. And then there is a recommendation, the plan, to come back every five years. The plan also says, come back every five years and do a tree canopy cover analysis to see how our progress is doing. I mean, you're right. People want to grow the canopy. They want to maintain the canopy. Right now, status quo, without any changes to current operations, we're going to see a continued decline of our canopy, maybe accelerated, given the amount of dead trees that we're seeing. Just to sustain what we have right now and only slightly grow, it will require some changes.
Right. So, so I understand that, and I think that, you know, we should be talking to the public about this. Hopefully, people are paying attention. Okay, so I won't get that report card for another three, four and a half years. Anyway, but hopefully, there's gonna be less red than before. But I did notice one section from there, which was related to planting, that was almost all red, which means we're doing, we were doing really poorly six months or more ago. So I'm assuming from the report you've just given us that we're doing a bit better. But for me, the planting area, super important, and I just wonder, where are we at with that in, in your opinion?
So I think, I think we are doing much better. I think a council did approve a budget to increase the planting last year at a one-time. So the Parks Department, Ms. Bentley did increase the planting. She's also received a grant recently to do more planting. So we, I, I think it's, the other important fact is that we're, we're now tracking the amount of trees that we're planting, and also the locations, including the schools and stuff, so we have a better idea of how we're doing. You know, there's other things, like we're planting better species of trees, which is important. I know in some of the garden beds around, we're trying to really look at native species to, that will survive in this climate and stuff. So that's also an important note, is that we're doing potentially a better job right now at planting. But the other element is that those, those small trees, they need to be cared for and maintained. So Ms. Bentley, when they, when they choose their areas for planting, they want to ensure that it's close to a water source. It has the support indeed. So we are quite strategic in where we turn to plant. We, we don't want to plant trees everywhere. And then it's also, you know, if we look at the business areas and the sidewalks and stuff, replanting trees, we really need to be cognizant of like how much the impacts the sidewalks are and, 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 you know, the uprooting and that sort of stuff. So we're taking a more careful approach, I think, in our planting to ensure that the trees actually do survive over time.
Okay. On that note, the, I just noticed the other day, the trees at the foot of 14th that we've planted on either side of, you know, where Earl's is and Van City on the other side, you know, that's all been redone. I realized they're mostly, they look fantastic. They are really starting to look big and, and, you know, they provide shade, which is really important. And anyway, they look fantastic. So that's, it's a great example of, of what you're talking about. Okay, so I guess my last question, and in terms of the actions, you know, I think that the community supports the private property actions and the public lands actions that you're proposing. But I guess, you know, I've been through the, the fight of, as Counselor Cassidy was here for that in 2016. as Councilor Cassidy was here for that in 2016, the seventy-five centimeter issue down to the twenty centimeter issue. We didn't have the canopy cover results, et cetera. You know, I was pausing to see what the science really said. And, you know, in the meantime, it's taken a big slide because of drought and the lupa moth as well. But I'm now convinced that we need to reduce the size. But I guess my question is, why? I think I know what your answer's going to be, but just help us all understand, seventy-five is really big. And twenty is really, seems quite small. Like, why not fifty? Why twenty? Why did we choose twenty? Why are we still talking about twenty? And I hope it's not just because North Van's done it. But, you know, what is the science behind that? And is it going to make a difference? You're already saying that it might not make a difference. So I want to know, you know, should we be going forward? I would like to go forward with this, but, you know, the majority of council has to be on board.
So through the mayor, so twenty centimeters in diameter were selected. So the way the tree bylaw works is that any trees within your permitted building envelopes, your zoning setbacks, can be removed to allow for the allowable building that you can build. And so, and then everything outside of it, if it's protected, requires a tree permit. It comes into difficulty when there's a driveway coming in and/or construction is going to impact a tree zone. So it's difficult to protect every tree. Lowering it significantly. So just for your reference, in our development permit areas for the foreshore and the creeks, it's ten centimeters in diameter or greater. So almost every single tree in those areas are protected. Those are environmentally sensitive and really great. Twenty centimeters is low. It's a big change. But I think the idea is that, is to try to save as many trees that are just cleared for just getting a machine to come in and really looking at a more thoughtful ways to try to protect them. One of the other recommendations in the plan was to consider zoning bylaw variances, to alter the zoning setbacks, say on a side yard to protect a tree. That could be a little bit more so it's not as confined. You could shift your house over. So there's various ways. But, you know, if we wanted to consider, you know, a higher tree protection size, so somewhere between twenty and seventy-five, we could consider that as well. But again, this was, this was really focusing on the fact that we're not seeing a lot of canopy loss on existing properties. We're seeing the canopy loss related to development properties. So, you know, we really wanted to target the problem and find a balanced approach. And so that's what the consultant recommended. We could continue to explore that and determine if there's something in between. District of North Van doesn't have that criteria. They actually have, I would say, less regulations than we do on trees, on property. So they haven't explored that. They do have the density and the canopy coverage requirements to require more replanting than we do.
Oh, okay. I, for some reason, I thought they had the twenty centimeter.
No, I mean, they have the same thing for their creek areas, for sure. But what I understand, in speaking to their, my counterpart last week, is that they call their seventy-five centimeter diameter trees large diameter trees. So they have the protected species, similar to what we have, the arbutuses and the garyoaks and that sort of thing. But their seventy-five centimeter trees are large diameter trees. And you are allowed to remove them, even if they're not hazardous. But they really focus on the replacement, depending on the amount of canopy cover that's already existing on your property. So for us, our seventy-five centimeter diameter trees, you're only allowed to remove them if they're hazardous or if they're in your permitted building envelope when you're building a new build. So ours is a bit more restrictive.
Okay, so I guess I've been hearing the wrong rumors. Okay, so I guess just to finish, I would suggest that, you know, if we're going to go and discuss this further, you know, at another committee of the whole or drill down on this anymore with council, that this is the issue, should we go forward with this, this change in bylaws. All the rest of it, you know, is just good, in my opinion, great. But it's this one that's the stickler and that will be the most difficult. And, you know, I'd like to hear what other people have to say. And I guess, you know, there's not enough time today.
Thank you, Councilor Gambioli. Just before turning to Councilor Thompson, a quick question. Do you have any idea what they're doing in Stanley Park? Driving through there and you just see the incredible decimation of the forest. What are they doing? Are they replanting?
They have done replanting. So they're right now removing trees, and they're not completely done, that have been infested with lupa moth. So they got hit by the lupa moth quite significantly during the outbreak earlier in the 2000s. It didn't quite come to the North Shore until more recently. So I don't think we've seen as much of a devastated impact. But the lupa moth spread through many of their trees. And then they left a lot of these, and it's my understanding, and please don't quote me on this, but my understanding is that they left them so long to be hazardous that they needed to then go in, survey all the trees. And there was many, many trees that were significantly hazardous, particularly along the causeway because of the targets, right? I mean, there's, you don't need to remove a tree if there's no targets. And so they went in and removed them. And I understand it was quite controversial. People were quite upset about it. They have done some replanting, for sure, of other species. My, I think they've only completed the first phase of the tree work, and they'll be doing more. But it is really directly to address their lupa moth outbreak.
Thank you. If they have any kind of report on what their plan is, I would love, love a copy of that. Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, I agree. This is a great report to get, but a lot to absorb. And I'm only going to make some really high-level comments and feedback for you for our next discussion. I am a big fan of a canopy replacement concept and definitely maintaining our canopy. It was, it was really satisfying to get our canopy study done. It's also really surprising to see how quickly that can change, depending on circumstance. You know, and we went from having a healthy canopy to now into a less vibrant canopy because of the environment. I just wanted to be clear on one thing, Councilor Gambioli. When you started, you talked about putting funds from where into addressing our tree issues? Was it the environmental levy?
I didn't say where it was coming from. I said that council had directed staff in March to come, to come back with options for supporting funding, supportive funding on this for the next fifteen years. We essentially said, we want to support this for the next fifteen years. Show us how to do it.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I just wanted to be clear on that. I missed it. You know, the canopy replacement, and trust me, for those of you in the room, I really do appreciate there's a sensitivity behind, just because you take down a big tree and put another one in place, it's not the same kind of value. But I do think, when it comes to private land, considerations need to be made in this direction. And I do wonder, too, that if, you know, if we allow taking down trees in private land, if we can consider replacing canopy elsewhere for whatever tree there is. I think there's some really interesting creative solutions given our ongoing or newly arriving efforts in tree planting. I participated in a couple of those last year, and there are lots of feel-good moments. So it'll be nice to see where we get with that. But I do think there's areas where if you're taking it down in private land, you could perhaps contribute, whether it's paying for trees in public land. But, you know, one of the things we deal a lot with here are complaints from private landowners who have large trees that don't necessarily fit with a residential household for whatever reasons, nuisance, intimidation. You know, there's so many things that big trees can cause. And not only on private land, but on the boulevards between the roads and the private land. And I do think we need to come up with a mechanism, again, keeping in mind maintaining canopy. But, you know, do we have a variance permit process for trees that typically should be protected but are causing, whether it's uprooting of driveways or getting into sewage systems, things like that?
Through the mayor, so the tree bylaw has various conditions of whether a tree can be removed or not. Some, it's hazardous, dead dying. One of them is, as you say, interference or conflict, and I can't remember the exact wording, with utilities, damage to somewhere, that would be potential rationale for removal of a tree.
Okay, thank you. That does include that. And how, what do you define as hazardous?
A hazardous tree would be one that'd be assessed by an arborist as being high-risk.
For falling?
For falling.
Okay, okay.
Due to its condition.
Thank you, Councilor Watt, then Councilor Snyder, and then I'm going to have to suggest that we'll wrap it up for this afternoon. Councilor Watt?
Yeah, so thank you for all your work on this report. And I've got a few questions here. So with ninety-seven respondents, how statistically accurate could that be perceived to being just?
Well, I don't think.
So we don't, well, often when you do a survey, you do know what the statistical accuracy is. So I'm just asking. I think it's a fair question.
I'm, through the mayor, I mean, I can't really comment on the statistical accuracy. What I will say, and as Councilor Gambioli alluded to, is that there continues to be strong support to maintain the urban canopy. There wasn't a lot of negative comments, I would say, coming through the survey. You know, in the past, it would be, stop doing this, leave us alone. We don't want you to regulate our trees. We heard a few of those this time, but not that many. There continues to be a strong support for the urban forest.
So one of the other things that I want to emphasize, and it came from your report. So despite the concern for our canopy here, and I agree that we should maintain it, we are, if I'm not mistaken, the third-most treed municipality in all of the lower mainland, just behind is at Lyons Bay and Port Moody. So, I mean, we are obviously doing something right. And as we continue to be forced to develop, which we are, it seems to me to be unreasonable to penalize individual property owners by reducing the size down to twenty-five centimeters when, as we all know, the real issue is by and large development. So I'm just going to say it. I'm not a fan of regulating individual property owners for a problem they didn't create and are not creating going forward. So, yeah, I just think, what I do here, and it may not be in the survey, most of the people I speak to do not want that added layer of bureaucracy. And I also certainly don't want to see us hiring new people to further police our residents.
Thank you, Councilor Watt. Councilor Snyder?
Yes, thank you. I won't repeat what Councilor Watt said, but I would support her comments as well going forward as far as. I do think there's a lot of discussion that has to happen in regards to the private land and how we deal with that. I did have a question with you, for you, though. If I understand correctly, previously, the area that's being calculated for the canopy does not include all district land. Is that correct?
It includes, it's defined as the urban containment boundary. So it's all existing neighborhoods. And Metro Van kind of, the regional district establishes the urban canopy boundaries or containment boundaries for most of the municipalities. So in our case, and I do have a map, it's all existing and future neighborhoods and all privately owned upper lands. So a lot of the lands that are owned by BPP, for example, that could be developed. It doesn't include land above the twelve-hundred-foot contour. That's just our parkland and that sort of stuff. So we're really monitoring the canopy cover in our urban areas.
Okay, great, thank you. I just, I understand the time limitations. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gambioli, can we have a quick wind-up?
Yes, just to clarify, the original plan was, had input from many, many, many hundreds of people, the one that established that eighty, eighty-seven percent of the community wants to increase or maintain. It's only the, about a hundred people related to the very most recent workshops, which we're looking at prioritizing the implementation. So not the original plan. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I forgot to say that personally, I think that a program to give trees to the community at a very low price to plant on their own private property would be super successful and would be a great educational tool and a great good news story for the community. So I would love to see that happen and funds put aside for that in the next budget. I think that would go over super well. Great opportunity to partner with our local groups and stewardship groups and whatnot.
Thank you, Councilor Gambioli. And just on Councilor Snyder's comment about the area, I think we really, you know, just looking at the devastation of Stanley Park, knowing the health of the trees in our upper lands seems to me to be a real priority.
So we in our canopy, like, we can still, when we do flyovers for the canopy cover analysis and collect the LiDAR data and stuff, we can still look further than our urban containment boundary and look further up and see how things are doing. The analyses that we're doing, you can really look, start looking at swaths of dead trees and really picking up locations. So the technology's improving quite a bit over time. The canopy cover analysis to look at trends and changes over times, you really want to make sure you're looking at the same area over and over again to ensure consistency. That doesn't mean that we can't look farther and monitor further up.
I just, you know, if we were to run into the same kind of problem, I sure want to know about it sooner rather than later. With that, I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that came to speak on this today. Oh, sorry, Councilor Cassidy.
In the interest of time, I'll be very quick. So these are trees that have been attacked by the lupa moth. Are they of any value, commercially speaking? Or are they basically useless, that we cannot use them in building? We cannot make bark mulch out of them? Do they have any commercial value after they've been taken down? Or are they just going to be left to rot?
So through the mayor, I don't believe that Hemlock has, I mean, I don't know, but I don't think that they have a lot of commercial value. From what I understand, is most of these trees are chipped up and taken to composting or those types of facilities. They can be reused so, in gardens and that sort of stuff. But I'm not, I'm not sure that there's any commercial value. I think they get to the point, too, where they become so infested that the quality of the wood is not good anymore, so.
So they're not even good enough for bark mulch?
Oh, yeah, they're good for, so, so they get chipped up. I mean, it's much easier to remove them out of a forest area by chipping them first and then hauling them away, similar to what we've done in the past with our wildfire fuel management program, is that we use some of the trip mulch and barks for our beds and trails and that sort of stuff. I think that's used elsewhere, too. Everything else gets taken to a composting facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Keith. Are there any members of the public who wish, and I would just ask if we could be quite brief? Council has two more meetings we have to do today.
So I'll try to be Jean Thiel, but it is really a struggle to see this consultant's report when dedicated community members have been for two or three decades saying exactly this same stuff. So it takes a lot of patience and humility, I guess, to sit and watch this. Like, the amount of time and effort that people have put into saying exactly what this, I don't know what this cost, the district, this most recent consultant's report. I mean, what I provided at the time when the interim tree bylaw was put forward, I don't know how many years ago. I've lost track with COVID, et cetera. But I provided so many links to exactly this. You know, like, I always go to a big effort. I photocopy expansively, expansively, extensively. And so, you know, it's shocking.
We are always grateful for your input and your thoughts and, sorry, these things take time.
Well, I mean, I provided and I don't get response back. Like, I write to these people in charge of these departments, and it turns into some kind of argument because, I mean, everyone knows that trees grow in communities. And for decades, this community has treated trees like individual siloed items and taken down swaths and left some little thin band that then blows down. Or, you know, the district continues to give permission for blasting for basements, which destroys the tree roots of the trees. And what starts out as some big ultimate lot that maybe fifteen or twenty big trees will remain, they do not. It becomes absolutely clear-cut, and we've watched this. I mean, it's not like I'm just kind of bragging and wanting to vent, but it brings such sorrow because we talk to you and we advise you. because we talk to you and we advise you of what's going to happen. And, you know, this has been going on for at least two decades, the clear cutting of Altamont lots because of the blasting for basements. And I really feel like that, that is one of the starting points of what we need to address. Because everyone knows the tree roots are going to be damaged. The trees have to be taken down because they become hazardous. And so, oh, good, they fit within that category. There they go. Put an H on it or whatever you do, another hazardous tree. And I, I really think also the education has to start with real estate agents and people who move into this district. This is not Richmond. I mean, we don't even have the farmland. We are a treed community. For the rest of the lower mainland, people come here. They recognize us as being a treed community. So I don't think there can be too much excuse for people, you know, moving in and spending their $4 million or whatever to buy a beautiful piece of property and then complaining about the trees that they're intimidated by them. Yeah, I have friends come from Hong Kong and they're like, wow, those are big trees. But you know, maybe Hong Kongese people aren't as happy living amongst big trees. And it's not like we don't like Hong Kongese people.
I, I am going to have to ask you to wind it up. So I, we do appreciate your point very much. And I do apologize, we've, we do have to wind up today.
I mean, maybe there needs to be more signage actually on the streets. You know, like nice little park-like little signs talking about the trees.
Okay. I've got one other gentleman, sir, and then I, I'm, I really do need to wind up this meeting. So thank you.
Just want to make just want a quick comment about the, the lupr moth and the hemlock in Stanley Park. And we had a discussion about this during a workshop at Maplewood last in the weekend. So I thought I'll sort of add this, because actually there seems to be not too many trees, not too many hemlocks. It's actually a Douglas fir forest mostly in Stanley Park. I think it was about 70 something percent, 75% or so. Our trees, our hemlocks have actually done fairly well compared to. And I'm guessing this is probably because we, it was a fairly managed forest and there was some work that was done in Stanley Park to sort of prevent blowdown, which of course actually sort of seemed to backfire, sort of based on what the consultant actually had done there. So, and I'm guessing that, I think we're actually doing fairly well in terms of, of our health, our, our hemlock trees. So I just wanted to kind of make that point.
I hope it stays that way.
Yeah, I think so. So I think it's just as far as we don't sort of, sort of over manage something and maybe we'll still be okay with that. Okay.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by Councilor Watt, seconded by Councilor Gambioli. Question, all in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you very much. And could I have a motion, please, to adjourn? Moved by Councilor Watt, seconded by Councilor Snyder. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. The next meeting of council will be at 7:00 PM. And we now go into our in-camera session. Thank you.